One o'clock, we'll open the meeting of the Town and Halifax Planning Board. It's being held at 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax in the meeting room for today, March 20th, 2025. Okay, the Planning Board meeting is being, so everybody knows, is being recorded by every 58 and can be reviewed or viewed on YouTube. President tonight's meeting is Brennan Elliott, Amy Tru, myself, Bert Gainer, Tom Millius, and Rick Merritt. Okay, I'll ask for a, everybody have a copy of the agenda? I'll ask for a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and second to accept the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Okay, let's go with our first one. PSPR 25-2-350A Industrial Drive Site Plan Approval.
350?
I'm sorry?
350A.
Yes. Your name, sir, your address, please, just for the record.
Paul Newcomb, Paul Newcomb Street Service.
Okay, so what are we doing?
I have to put up two buildings behind my office building to put the trucks in.
And what's the, what do you guys want?
Wanting to have it up there again.
You did good.
How big are the buildings? 125 by 50?
Yeah. That would be like the style of building. I only need four of these.
We can share.
Sorry.
We can share.
Give me a little sec.
Oh, I got another one. I got two.
Got you very well.
I thought I'd be fine. Sorry.
Okay, why don't we start off, sir, with what you may mention is for the, for your trucks. So it's strictly for storage of, what, like overnight trucks?
Yeah, all my trucks are pockets, I just put them in the snow or the rain.
Cement floor?
Yes, sir.
Floor drawings?
Ah, yeah, floor drawings.
You might have any, well, can you do anything on that maintenance?
Probably.
What's the, this application command, do you send it out to the other department?
We don't have an application for, do we?
I don't know.
Is there an application in you?
I don't have one.
I wouldn't have done it after he told me I'd only do that first, so I didn't have any idea.
March 20th?
You wouldn't have had to go yet. I'm sorry?
So it's March 20th, 2025 at the top. I don't know if that's the application date.
Yeah, application date. It's all conditioned.
Did you do this today?
Today?
I was gonna say. Oh, March 12th, I think, see, that had the last page for, last page, March 12th.
Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Should we send it out to all the other boards for comments to come back to us and then we can do something when the 30 days is up on April 12th or after?
In the meantime, also, what about a site plan review?
Well, that's what it is, is to get the comments from the other boards so that we can do a proper site plan review.
Is this a pre-existing? Oh, no, it isn't, it says right on it, proposed drainage bin. So there is not one there now?
Yeah, there's one.
Basin.
Is that the basin that goes up the building right here?
Oh.
We're gonna move that here because this is the oldest part of the property. So it just makes sense to put it back here as soon as water flows out. And then I'm gonna have the drainage just come down the side straight to the, right here.
Is there any bathrooms in the buildings or, oh, no?
I'd like to put bathrooms in the building, yes.
So you have to do another septic for that or can they put it in the?
Joe said we should be able to tie right into it.
Tie right into it, yeah, I understand. So you're taking all the drains there and putting all of it here, right?
Yeah, that's existing one, yeah, put it all back here. This is the oldest spot, so.
So you gotta still get to show all the floor drain tanks and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, you gotta do that.
No, he, he told me that. He did. I submitted it on the tour lift and then I went to him and he already had this all set up for one building here that I think was already approved when Cory Merritt owned it, but it was 50 by 100, it was all approved. So he just basically laid it all out the same, except for moving that here and putting it on the building there.
And the whole parcel is 1.5 acres, 68,480 square feet. Nothing on the front's gonna change?
Yes, sir.
Where were the trucks being stored now? Just basically where the proposed site is, wherever they fit.
Exactly.
Now, are there still on the site or are there gonna be, you know, logs, wood, wood chips?
I don't have any of those.
Nothing, that all gets, nothing stored outside?
We did that one right there.
It's pretty low.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah, only around 10 acres or whatever.
Yeah, they're right around 10.
So the garage, Joe, is gonna be facing like 106, is it?
Yeah.
It's tight, tight, huh? Yeah, I was wondering about the turn in the one.
30, 50 feet, I know.
Yeah.
That's tight for a car. Well, the first garage is not really as tight.
Yeah, it's like 37, the tightest, and the others on that side is not bad.
Yeah.
30 feet is tight for a car.
I'll probably put my race cars in that building.
There you go.
That's the first building, I'll put my tree trucks in there, I'll put my race cars.
Right.
I should have saved my son's race cars. I'm getting old for that.
Don't say the old word.
I feel 25 years of tree work gives me a feeling.
Yeah, that's tough work. Behind the second building, is that all gonna be paved?
I don't plan on paving any, just, I'm probably gonna pave just like 10 feet in front of our building, like the apron.
You're gonna have some hard pack down there somewhere.
Yeah, I'm gonna put recycled asphalt down everywhere.
My thinking is fire needs to look at this to make sure they can get their vehicles around the building.
30 feet's more than enough, it's wider than the.
No, no, depending on what they're driving on.
Yep.
You know, you get into March, you know, you get four inches of mud.
Oh, I gotta drive my trucks on it, probably heavier than the fire trucks.
I would imagine that. Maybe not the engine so much when it's.
Great, 130,000 pounds.
Wow.
An engine's probably 80, 90 tons.
Okay.
Yeah.
When like you have that one, that's the extender rod and it kinda shakes if it goes down the road, it's like.
The crane, yeah. Yeah, air ride, you feel like you're on a boat.
Anything on the bylaws we can, for the distance between the two buildings? It says 12 feet here.
Fire fire separation, that's all, he's got that, yeah.
Yeah, 10 feet.
So I mean.
The only other thing is 25% coverage. Did he calculate that? You can't cover more than 25% of the lot. I mean, he probably got it, but.
More than one building.
6200?
6200, and the other one's 700. And I don't know what the office building is, I don't have a map on that one. And I think there's more than enough acres there.
Maybe we can get Joe to figure out a number for it for you.
What?
On what the calculation of how much you're covering.
13,200 something? Everybody goes to their phone.
I'm just using my calculator.
There's no dimensions on the front office building either, right? Or are you gonna calculate?
Well, he's got a, he's got a dimension on the plan, or a square footage. Existing buildings, 2,244 square feet.
Got it.
So you've got 17,000 square feet to play with.
Yeah, 17, 120.
Yeah.
17, 120.
Yeah, exactly.
Divide that by 68, 480.
So the two, the two big office buildings, I figured it's about 11,000 square feet.
11 to 50 for. Yeah, so you've got about 13.
So you're, yeah. The other building is not gonna be 5,000 square feet.
Are you doing them smaller, like sprinkling?
Yeah, I don't want to put sprinkles in, it's a hundred grand building.
No, you don't want sprinkles.
No. And then I gotta tie in through the road to bring in a little water in.
Is that shed going?
Huh?
The sheds being eliminated?
Yeah, yeah. Won't need the shed anymore. That's what the guys just function, that's all. Time clock in there. Got like 25 guys going out in the office every day, so there's a shed to function now.
Sounds like the fence down.
It'll be nice once we get the garage. I'm sure those trucks aren't very cheap, so leaving them out in the weather will be cringing. It just sucks when it snows.
Yeah.
Spend two hours cleaning all the drains off and then blocks away, we have jobs set up and they're also pretty nice, which is, you know, it's just nice when you pull out in the morning and everything's all warmed up and, you know, trucks don't have to smoke as it freezes.
Besides the two bathrooms, are they gonna be heated, like heat, space heaters, that type of thing, or what do you have?
No, I, I'll put, I'll put water and heat in there for bathrooms.
Oh, I mean, like for the storage area too, the warehouse area itself, is that heated or, or is it just gonna be?
It's gonna be heated, yeah.
What are they gonna have to heat it with, the thing, and will I need to do anything besides electric? Have you looked into that?
I'll probably do propane or oil.
You should ask about that.
Building inspector.
We stretched it out, right?
Yeah, talk to the building inspector. Massachusetts is getting weird as hell.
I know when I get East Bridge one, when I put a building over there, because I have a 60 by 120 building I bought that I took down, and I'm gonna put that over there, I wanna, I wanna heat that with wood chips. Yeah, Smith over in Mashville, he heats his whole buildings with wood chips.
Oh, okay. And he has a beautiful little place up.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Looks like boiler, is that what he's called?
Yeah, so he takes the boiler and he dumps it in with the hopper and heats the garage.
You got enough wood hanging around.
Oh, we got tons of wood chips, yeah.
Would that be allowed after July 1st, 2024?
I don't wanna do that over here, same, someday in East Bridge one.
Yeah, no, 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 I know, it's just like this stretch road in Massachusetts on July 1st, 2024 is needed, that it's all electric heat.
What?
Yeah, they're trying to get rid of fossil fuels. Fossil fuels, resale, the oil anyway, yeah.
There ain't enough power.
No, no, there isn't, you're absolutely right.
California, you can't run AC and plug your car in. It doesn't have enough. I don't know what you think.
Even new houses now, you have to have a plug for, if you got a garage, you have to have a plug for electric cars. You gotta put in a chaise or whatever.
It's just raining.
And I just wanted you to look into it so that you'd be prepared.
No surprises.
Yeah.
That would be super fun.
The outdoor wood fronts, that's the way to go. Yeah. Good, oh, yeah.
Well, you know, they changed the EPA ratings on those in March 2020.
Yeah, yeah.
Kenny had one in a cellar that he put someone in, and he's like, now the boys are on the host? I ain't filming it. He's like, I gotta sell that thing.
Write that down. Thank you. The boys will load it.
Once the boys moved out, that was it. That's funny.
All right, so as far as the site plan review go, we need to set up a revolving account, have Pat Brennan go out, what are we doing?
Yeah, but he's still gonna, he's gonna wanna see like four drain septic all after the buildings.
Yeah.
Gonna wanna see that before he raises his hand. Yeah, there's no detail for that stuff. There's no detail or anything like that. Just, you know, that's a waste of money of him, he's just gonna say, well, you know. So that's gonna be the plan.
So, yeah, you can, if you get that all set up and then send it to the office and we can send it out for comment, then we can probably have you on the second meeting maybe, but, right? Does that make sense to everybody else? So get the updates on like septic and probably write on there what the lot coverage is, have just everything written by the engineer, and then we can get comments and have the revolving account, right?
All right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
So you have.
What are we looking for, a month for revolving account? Are we doing 15, 2, what are we doing?
So there we, we have.
There's 15.
Yeah, somewhere like, well, why don't you do like 15, 2,000 and then?
We're even.
So there's, these, the plans, after you get the septic and the drainage and everything all in, would be reviewed by a PR engineer that the town hires.
Okay.
So you have to pay for that part, the town doesn't pay for your application to be looked at. Does that make sense?
You have to pay two engineers?
You have, so you, yeah.
Yes, yes, the answer is yes.
Yes, yes, yes. But one looks at it in the best interest of the town, how fast to make sure that we're not missing anything or anybody's not missing anything, just double tracking things. I know.
Want to do that in two separate motions and make it one grand one? Put it all together?
Well, I mean, how do you, I'll do it in one, but.
What's a pleasure with the board? What do you guys think?
Well, we have to use the, Rick.
Does anybody have any alter?
We have to send them out too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but should we wait until it gets all the septic and drainage on it first?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that really is the best way to do it, that way if anybody has a comment.
So septic drainage and square footage you want now?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just maybe itemize one, the bathroom, we have the bathrooms that go in and things like that. Light, lighting plan, right?
Yeah.
What was it?
The lighting plan.
Oh, it's a lighting. Yeah, I probably just have it on the side of the buildings.
Yeah, they have, they can't go past a lot line, there's a formula there.
Yeah, you got. Any other landscaping or anything going on? Trees, bushes, anything, or just leave the front alone, the way?
No, I go cost money and then I gotta maintain all that.
Yeah.
I gotta, the front looking nice and they can, I pay landscaper to do all that and it's good.
So we can probably, what, get the plan in by the next meeting, which is April 3rd? So that gives you a couple weeks almost. And then, but in the meantime, we can set up the PR review and as soon as the plan gets into the office, we can send it out for comments. That way it'll be back to us, PR review.
Try to get it done as soon as possible.
And then it'll probably be within the 45 days of the site plan application anyways. Am I right? Does everybody agree with that?
Have you done a formal application on it already? We don't have one here, we're not filed.
What do you mean? I did it online.
Oh, that's how we came in.
Is Danielle?
They don't, they don't do paper.
Yes, Danielle should be on there.
We could ask her if she's got one.
Danielle, are you on?
Can I mute the mic? That would be on her end. But either way, I mean, if, if we can find out if we have a formal application on it and then we need one before you got two weeks.
What's a formal application?
It's the reason.
I think, I think if you did it online and come to the.
This is, you did it.
Yeah.
This is it.
Yeah.
Right, and it says site plan review right there. It's just missing a lot of the information.
We still had some, applications from 1734. I wanted to do a hand read of all, so I'm like, if I go home and try doing this on the computer, so I go downstairs, I think it was Danielle helping me and the building inspector helping me. And so I did the whole, everything that they told me I needed to do, that I thought, if I did something, they missed it too.
Well, actually, actually, that's your best bet.
Yeah, I didn't wanna mess it up.
If you ask the building inspector specifically, you know, what do, what do you want to see, he'll make sure Joe puts it on, because Joe, Joe is very good.
Yeah, Joe knows this.
So update that. We'll set up a revol, I'll make a motion to set up a revolving account in Paul Newcomb's name for 350 Industrial Drive A, 350A Industrial.
I don't know why it says A, maybe it's because I have the S on it still.
Well, I think it's just 350.
Yeah, it's 350.
There were two units there at one time.
Yeah.
So that's probably.
Yeah, like A and B, I think it was, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, well, excuse me.
It's not A, it's good.
So I'll make a motion to set up a revolving account in the amount of $1,500 for Paul Newcomb SPR 25-2.
Everybody okay with 1,500?
Yeah, some places start, should cover it, more than cover it.
Okay, so you have a motion, do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a motion and a second. To proceed with the application for PS.
Revolving account.
And the revolving, well, yes.
We didn't do the other one yet.
For PSPR 25-2. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Brennan?
Yes.
Amy?
Just clarifying, this is just the revolving account right now, right?
Oh, just the revolving.
Yeah, because we'll do a motion separately, we decided, right?
Yep.
Okay, just the revolving account, yes.
Myself, PS, Tom?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yeah.
Okay, passes for the $1,500 revolving account. You just set that up with the.
I didn't check with me, so I'll have to bring it back.
Oh, no.
There's nobody sitting there anymore.
And then just have all the updates done and once it gets in, then we'll, we'll have Danielle send it out for all the comments.
Bring it to Danielle when I get it done.
Send it out for all the comments to the departments and the fire department and everything so that we can find out everything they have to say.
Got it.
Whatever isn't spent comes back to you. Whatever doesn't get spent.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, and then we can send it out and then probably see you on April 17th with the full package in front of us. Does that make sense?
Something.
You guys?
Yeah, it's good.
I think it does.
Do we need a motion for that or we just do it?
We just put it on.
Right? All right.
Cool.
And then if you need any more time, you can just ask us for an extension.
Yeah, that's, that's no problem.
Okay?
All right, cool. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Yes, please.
Do you need a copy?
She had to step away.
Oh.
Do you want a copy of this?
Let me check.
If you don't have one today.
I'll take them. It's fine. Thank you.
What's the plan you have in your hand? What does that have?
That's the thing you have.
It's the same thing?
I just figured you didn't want these huge ones.
That doesn't show all the drainage or anything like?
No.
It's just the same as this? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, literally, I picked those up and, you know, where's the floor drains? She goes, ah, I thought I knew those. And then what about the second, we tie into the existing? She said, yeah, we can tie into the existing. All right, well, we gotta put all that on there.
Yeah, all right, okay.
And here we have.
Take care.
I think I, he just didn't have enough time, so.
Right.
Well, I just filed, what, eight days ago, and you got the plan ready for me that way, so.
It's all good.
All right, thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, let's move on. We go, that was our only appointment for tonight. Let's move into some discussions next. Project manager, Luke DiStefano, Stefano Abola, on behalf of Walmart, would like to.
Paul.
He's got his, his number on this application here. But it's gonna get postponed.
He'll be back.
I hope he comes back and doesn't go all the way home. That would be awful.
What'd you say, Luke?
I'm gonna be with him, right? I have to bring.
See if I can catch him in the parking lot.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Robert.
You just open the window and throw it out.
Go long.
Go long, yeah.
Hi, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Your name, sir?
Luke DiStefano with Fuller Engineering. Informally here, I think we probably have plans up on the screen. If we can, I've got some plans here. Basically, just wanted to have an informal discussion relative to Walmart's plans to.
Looks like he's trying to find your point right now.
To potentially construct a fuel facility out there, existing warehouse on Plymouth Road. I'm not sure, I'm guessing you haven't seen any of the plans at this point, okay, so hopefully.
The Walmart, was it?
Yeah, Walmart.
Just a wow, yeah. Just a wow, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't very well in there.
Tom, great one.
You should be able to come over here and drag however you need to.
Remember you said that.
Are you in charge of the?
Said, remember you said that.
So basically, like you were saying, it's Walmart's plan to construct roughly, it's about a 1,600 square foot, but what I'll call a convenience store with eight gas pumps out in front. So if constructed as shown on this particular plan, you'd be able to fuel 16 cars at any one given time, because you can fuel two cars at each dispenser, one on each side. The store would effectively be an offshoot of Walmart. They'd sell convenience type items that you would find pretty much in any convenience store, gas station at the Cumberland Farms, which I believe is directly across the street. Much smaller than your typical convenience store. Traditionally, convenience stores are in the 5,000 to 6,000 square foot range, so this is intended to be a true convenience store. It's supposed to be another amenity for folks who are using the Walmart. They can use the Walmart, they can get gas, but if they just wanna use gas, they wanna pick up a couple of sundries, milk, orange juice, that type of thing, they can do it without having to go into the store itself. We know that the use is not allowed in the commercial business zone, but we understand we can get a special permit for the use. We've had some preliminary discussions with municipal staff, so we know that's one of the permit hurdles we need to get by. We also know site claim review is gonna be required, and if we get to that point, when we get to that point, we'll have a full set of site engineer drawings, all the stuff you were talking about the last year, and drainage, all that good stuff. Couple of things presented themselves when we got our site survey done, and that's really why we're here tonight. That area where the gas stations were posed currently a vacant lot. However, we did some due diligence and there appears to be an easement granted to the town back in 1997-ish by the planning board that basically says nothing to be developed in that area.
An easement for what? Excuse me. Continue to.
It just says that there's an easement that prohibits building, prohibits roads, prohibits a lot of things. It seems to be tied to the natural wildlife corridor, which oddly enough is nowhere in this area. There is a wildlife corridor easement that basically runs in the northwest corner of the property. Again, we haven't had the attorneys take a real hard look at it because we just wanted to informally discuss it. And one of the things we're hoping is if that easement was something that the planning board wanted because they wanted to preserve open space or, you know, something along those lines, Walmart is willing to put the same amount, it's about 65,000 square feet of area in that easement. And I, if I do, I'm gonna get back to the next plan, another plan that shows the easement.
I realize I have my apologies.
Yeah, so this right here is the easement area, and that was identified when we had our site survey completed. As noted, it's about 65,000 square feet. This is the wildlife corridor I was talking about here, that's another easement. We understand that. These areas shown in one in blue would be Walmart's first option for a swap of light for light area. That's about 65,000 square feet, and if this was intended to have some sort of correlation to the wildlife corridor, this here would put it immediately adjacent to that wildlife corridor. This portion of that eas, or that area, however, is wooded and undeveloped, so another option would be, again, the. would be, again, depending on what the town's disposition would be, would be to do a 65,000 square foot area here. If you've ever been behind that Walmart, you know that that was previously permitted for parking. There's light poles back there that have been installed. They determined at some point they didn't need it. They don't need that parking.
It was more so determined that they didn't need to pave it.
Correct. They don't need it, period. Back when Walmart was.
Well, they do to comply with the bylaw, right?
We meet the zoning requirement for parking current.
One per hundred square feet.
We don't trip the one per hundred square feet, because we have less, or we have more than 45% green space. So our understanding is, based on the fact that we do not trip that 45% or less green space, they're required to have the lesser, which I think accounts about 580 some odd spots, and there's 600 and something. There'll be even a little bit more, should we do this, because we're out here a couple parking spots for the gas station, and not losing any on the property itself. So even though we know that that was, at some point, worked out for possible future development, Walmart's okay with saying, well, if we could swap it, we'd much rather have the fueling facility here, and, you know, we'll give up any future rights to potentially develop back there, because, you know, who knows what's going to happen? Clearly, these buildings are used like they used to be when this was permitted, and I think like the mid-'90s perhaps. The need for parking at Walmarts and Gasco's was a lot greater than it is today.
You're not getting the trips.
Yeah, generally, you're finding now with uses like this, that you're looking at about peak demand, peak time of year, peak hour, four per thousand square feet, four parking spots per thousand square feet, so one per 250, and that's a lot. More often than not, you're going to find, like I found today when I drove to that site, that, you know, 60% of the parking spots are empty, are just not used. And that doesn't even account for the several hundred, I think, that were originally permitted at the back of the building. So that was issue number one. The other thing that we uncovered when we got our site survey was that the front portion of that easement has the existing lead field.
Yeah.
We can relocate that. We don't think that's going to be an issue, so, you know, the use itself that we're proposing, not going to be a big demand on the septic system. We've started looking at the old design plans for the septic system, and we're pretty sure we can relocate it either somewhere on-site, or we can keep it where it is, kind of redefine a little bit of how we have things. We need to get into that. The biggest issue is the easement. If we don't get rid of the easement, the gas station simply can't go there. And like I said, the easement appears to have been a direct result of discussions with the planning board back in 1997, so we're trying to figure out what the mechanism is to get that extinguished if we can, or to modify so that that 65,000 square feet ends up somewhere else on the property and allows Walmart to construct the gas facility. And we certainly understand, if we get past this hurdle, we'll be back here talking all the stuff you guys typically review for site claim review, traffic, all that stuff that goes along with it.
That would be a concern.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, if, if in fact the egress is going to remain the same, just an entrance from the Mont Ponton Street, or is, or is this whole proposal going to require that to be two-way, in and out?
We wouldn't, we're not proposing to touch any of the access points to the existing facility. It would stay signalized intersection on Plymouth, the Mont Ponton one, you know, again, I know it's a, I'll call it a secondary access, but we're not proposing to do anything.
That was a right-only anyway going south.
Yeah, what they're proposing to do, we could go back to the other. The only change that we'd be looking to do, we understand this is one way. We might look to have a curb cut just to allow people to get out, is another egress point from the facility. The rest of it, you could see, this curb cut stays the same. You'd enter right in off of the main drag going into the Walmart, so there'd be really no impacts to existing traffic, traffic patterns. And these aren't anticipated to be a draw. You're not going to see a lot of new traffic coming to the Walmart, because they put a fuel facility there, it's going to be people who are either on the road already, or people who are going to the Walmart and wanting to dance.
It's like BJ's.
Yeah. Except this is open to the public.
When you said new curb cut, you'd only be able to take a left, right?
Correct. It'd be just another way to get people out and back.
Into the roadmain road and the store.
Yeah, back to the Walmart, or back to wherever they were looking to go.
I don't want to speak on behalf of any of Butters, but I would assume that they would rather this up here with this protected up along the residential of Butters than trying to put this back here or leaving this open. Like, if we had to swap this, this is very preliminary. But if, if this, we were going to move forward with this, in my head, if I'm one of these houses, I'm going, cool, protect as much of this back here and keep it as far away from me, assuming the Gasco.
You know, already.
Stick this top.
You know, already.
No, I'm saying, if he's talking about putting this.
But it's already just green grass and protected.
But it has the potential to be developed.
But it has, it can be developed. What he's saying is swapping can't be developed, or can be developed.
Wicked, wicked wet back there.
Have you been to Halifax?
Yeah, I walked up there.
When does what man's ever stopped anybody from backfelling and saying to draw things out, driving, you know, getting to park? Doesn't matter if it's right, it gets stopped. So what I'm saying is, is if you've got it on record, I agree with you, by the way. But what I'm saying is, is it does get done. So if we can have it on record, this does move forward and swap it, this is going to, I would assume, would be much more favorable for a Butter.
The other thing is with the, with the easement, a double check and, is the hill, and this is just a discussion, is the hill itself, would that be removed?
The verma out in front?
Yeah, because that is used as a platform for med flight.
Okay, that.
It has been used. That's not the only one in Halifax, but that is one.
Yeah, you could see that we're trying to maintain a fair amount of that lot that's undeveloped. So the gas is being pushed up as far as we can to, I'll call it, the northeast corner of that particular piece of open space. You'd still have plenty of room, you know, as you could see, I'm guessing, to, you know, use that as it's, as it's currently being used, for sure.
Just out of curiosity, the sewer treatment plant inside the building, what's the capacity of that?
I don't know. We haven't gotten that far yet. My guess is.
I'm sure it's not being used to capacity. I want to think it was 25,000 gallons, but.
I was going to say, if they put a treatment plant in, then it's got to be more than 10,000, because, right, if you're under 10,000, they could away with a conventional septic system. But my guess is, yeah, they were.
Yeah, that's my recollection, but it's been a while.
Is it going to change anything with the traffic pattern of the lot itself as far as your delivery trucks go?
Nothing changes, no. The only thing different will be, you can see on the plan here how we would get a fuel delivery truck heading around this site. That's it. All of the deliveries would be exactly as they are today.
Any thought on this, having two gas stations in town helping with the flow of traffic? When you have people coming out on two different sides of the street instead of all coming out of cumbies? I mean, I think it would help.
I think the traffic study would really help.
Yeah.
Well, I mean.
It's got to alleviate the congestion at the intersection.
That's what I'm saying. Instead of having to go all the way through the intersection, get into cumbies, come back out, take a left, or take it into that, that light, if you have a second option, it might actually help.
I don't know. I mean, the left lane was actually so at the light, so the left lane only, that whole area was produced by Walmart, if you look at the decision letter.
No, it's right, it's right turn only, going.
Am I doing?
Going south.
No, 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 I'm not on 58, I'm on 105, so that's the light.
Oh, I see.
I understand what you were thinking. But that whole lane, that left turn-only lane, is in the decision letter that was built by Walmart, widening of the road, and we've just halved it to go to Starbucks. Remember? And so that's an issue. And it's actually part of the reasons, there's a multiple-page letter at the Registry of Deeds that states in the decision letter that it's not just wildlife greenery, it's to keep the New England style of our town. So that whole area is meant to be that way. And if you look all the way at the back, there's all wetlands, huge wetlands. So your septic system is up there, because it's supposed to be as far away from the wetlands as possible, because if you put it up in the back, you're going to be right on top of rivers, streams, and swamps. So that's why it was also way over the, way up in the front. It was by design to do that, but it was also to keep the industrial look of Walmart out of the small town of Halifax. So it's part of the decision letter. It's not just like a wildlife thing, it's actually part design of the town.
I think back in 1997, this was the, first of all, A, was the only, it was the smallest Walmart in the chain, and, and B, I understood it to be the only store in the chain that had dormers in the front. And that was to fit within the character of the neighborhood.
So when they made the decision to let this, there was a lot of design and protection in here. I mean, I bore you guys with the multitude of reading, but it's all recorded at the Registry of Debs, and it's quite an extensive planning board decision letter that's recorded.
It only took four years to say.
Well, I think it was a very good job. Very good job. And I personally would say that if you're going to do a curb cut in that area off of 58, that there could be zero way for anybody to turn anyway but in.
I don't think he was talking.
No, we're not, we're not proposing.
No, I know, but I don't like it looking like this. I want it to look like that only. I don't want it.
He's talking about a curb cut into the parking lot.
No, I understand. I want that.
You want more.
So it winds to the left.
Yes.
Like we.
I can be 100% honest with that. Curb cut onto the driveway became an issue in any way, shape, or form, we'd just get rid of it. There's no need to have it, it's a nice to have, not a need to have.
I see what she's saying, though, that makes sense. So it doesn't.
Yeah.
Amy, you're talking about pulling rid of that.
Well, so, yeah.
Making it move this way.
Yeah. But I'm still all about this decision letter. I think it's recorded.
Do you have a copy of that?
I'm sure we, our surveyor probably has it, and if they don't, we can get a copy, but.
This is why I wanted the file at the meeting, the paper file at the meeting, because all of these documents would be in there, or should be. So when I ask for the files to come to the meeting for the agenda items, it's not because I'm trying to, but it's because there's a lot of stuff in it, like, we have two new things from Walmart, right? But we don't have the history of why it is this way if we don't have the file. So I don't, I just want to make a note that I think that all of the files, paper files, should be brought to the meeting, so that we can decipher things.
Although definitely be at the meeting, you know, it gets beyond the discussion period here.
Right.
The other thing that is a concern as far as public safety went, if there were cars coming, and additional cars coming in and out. I mean, if you were there not too long ago, you see the outside sales taking up 15, 20 parking spaces.
At least, if not more.
Yeah, that whole area. And I believe outside sales is by special permit. I just wanted to make sure Walmart was all aware of that. You know, the extension of the Garden Center is basically what it is.
I just had a thought. Walmart should buy the old Stock and Shop building and move the supermarket into that and have a good supermarket, with a bridge across to connect the Walmart store and actually have a real Walmart store.
Like Chicago.
Like a covered catwalk, heated, with electric.
See, you walked in here with a gas station, walked out with another building and a catwalk. Welcome to Hell. All those dudes.
Yeah. Just to touch on something you brought up, they're not looking to relocate the septic system to the back of the site. There's no plans for that. We probably, obviously, our first option would be to leave it right where it is. That would be best if we can. It would probably get relocated somewhere under the parking lot.
Could probably be modified, too.
Yeah, we'd be broad, we have to check it for Title V anyway, make sure it's still compliant, all that good stuff. We assume it is, because there hasn't been any violations or issues. So they would, if they had a little bit, find a way to make it as, you know, simple as possible and as close to where it is today. We're not looking to do anything in the back of the building. That's not their plan. Their plan, if they do anything in the back of the building, would simply be to relocate the easement. And as you mentioned earlier, that would be more beneficial to the neighbors back there, because it would grant them permanent protection from any development. That back of the building right now was previously approved in that planning board decision as parking. Now it was determined it wasn't, it needed to be paved, but it was approved for parking.
Right, so that would be removing parking, which is still part of the issue that you'd have to have. And I believe that you're within the distance that you can't put another building behind Walmart, that you're, you're as close to the lot line as you can get back there.
Right, but that whole area, it could be developed as something in theory.
No.
It was previously permitted.
It's parking. It's, it's part of this.
Right, but they could go in, they could add five acres of asphalt, put parking back there. That would be less beneficial to the neighbors if they added parking back there.
That's why it was designed that way.
Right.
So it's part of this. It's part of the decision letter, so you can't.
It was permitted for parking.
Right, grass parking.
No, asphalt. They just determined they didn't need it at the time, so they landbagged it.
That's my recollection, too.
Yeah, we saw the plans. That's why they look, there's, if you look on the plans, there's actually light poles. They put, they have all the light pole bases and the lights. You can see lights all the way throughout, so they have the infrastructure put in, so that at any time, if they needed it, they simply would come in, pave it, and be done.
Except for those lights wouldn't be able to leave the permanent perimeter of that lot, like the shine of them cannot go.
I'm sure they don't out. They're probably designed to have no trespass under the divided property. Those are just heads.
Do you think that we should let the Butters that are here to talk? You guys ready for questions from them and discussion?
Any other questions from the board? No? Yes, if you'd be sure, sure, why not? Your name and address, please.
Cheryl Powell, 42 second out, that little house right there, that's mine, so.
This one?
Nope. So this one right here is my house. So these lights, just won't stop the lights, just because you've mentioned that last. These lights aren't on, because I asked them to be shut off. They've shut off, and it's my house. The light from across the side of the parking lot does shine, believe it or not, into my home, into my kids' bedroom, besides that point. If you, you were talking about putting the gas station out near the septic, if you could get, you know, without problems with the easement, did you say if it didn't go out front, that you were planning on sticking it back here?
No.
Okay, so there's no plans of putting anything out here, except for just moving that easement and saying nothing could be built here?
Correct.
Okay.
More here. Like, it seemed like on that others, there was almost half.
About half of the button. If we kept it in the previously developed area, it would go to about halfway behind the building.
So about right here.
It's basically from the start of where the opening is from the fencing.
And that's an option that we would explore. One of the things that I'm thinking of now, knowing that we've got abutters on that entire door at the edge, there's nothing that says we couldn't take. I don't know what it would have to be at 20 feet along that entire Brooklyn property line and get 65,000 square feet there. So there, yeah, it's a buffer potentially all the way along that northern boundary.
But you're missing the point that easement was put there to buffer the town from your building and everything, not to buffer all of them. So you're, like, this planning board made a decision based on our bylaws and based on the people that came at that time to buffer the town from seeing Walmart from the street. So that's, that's exactly the wording of the easement.
I think what we're missing, though, oh, you're talking about this.
The wording of the easement.
No, I get it, I get it.
So moving it is just totally determining the fact of why it was there, and I don't think it's right.
Understood, understood, understood. To the point where, though, let's just have the same conversation in the order in which we're trying to have a conversation. This, they have every right to pave this and have as many cars back there as they can fit into parking spots. That's what it's approved for.
If they would get that.
Just saying, just saying. If, that's the point, this, what he's saying is, is if they were to do this in good faith, if he could, and the parking spots still line up, which I think it would, 700 that he has up here, say, I'll tell you what, we'll protect this whole area, so nobody's going to drop a piece of pavement back there whatsoever. Now, I understand what you're saying here, but it's also, if we're going to have this conversation any further than today, I think give and take, if we're going to do it, giving up this when the center of town is already the center of town to protect this and all of the abutters from here over seems like a pretty good barter to me.
I disagree. How, well, how did they, because they.
So how about this?
But I also don't think that that should be.
Please, let me ask you this. This is your house right here?
Yeah.
Would you like to have all those light poles turned on because we're going to pave all this because Walmart just feels like it one day?
Sounds like a threat.
It's not a threat. It's a, it's a right to the company. They have this approved to do that. It's not a threat. They, in that decision letter, they have every right to pave every inch of this and turn all those lights on and go, you know why? Because we decided to 20 years ago, 25 years ago.
And she did say simply Walmart, she just asked Walmart to show us.
That's it. And they go, well, you know what, to play nice with our neighbors, and we're not using this right now out of good faith because we just don't feel like it. We're going to, but if they wanted to, they absolutely could, and there's nothing.
Except for we've had other applications that have come through that have had lights shining on other people's properties, and they're supposed to be shaded and not, so that's just a little bit, like, not, not supposed to happen.
How would your stormwater or in your backyard system?
So here's, we'd like to address that because it is part of my concern about this whole thing that started back in 1997 when I bought the house in 1996, that because they built up this property, because once upon a time, when you walked from my yard, it was flat coming up to the bump, and there were pathways up into the bump. They built this up, so now all this neighborhood drainage comes right on down into here, right back here and behind the backside of my yard. So it is a complete puddle back there in the spring. Can't even walk down there. So this being built up is damaging my property by having it done that way. And I've watched so many meetings since I've gotten involved with the town stuff recently that we always seem to have concerns about people's drainage and this and that and catch basins, and nobody ever cared about what was happening here. Yes, there was a catch basin up here. Basically, that water just runs into the back. We have Walmart's attorney come down, and I mentioned this before.
In the hills.
In the hills. And nobody cared to hear about the drainage that was going on. Still a problem. So, I mean, in my personal thing, I'd like for that drainage to be there to hear water. The fence has not been done since 1997, and it's like this. It's about to blow over and fall into the yard, fall into the little patch in between the things. Two, it was ridiculous that we had two fences to begin with because they put it down on the lower level and didn't put it up at the higher level, so I watched people pee on the building. So they put the fence where they were supposed to put it up, on top of the mound. Now we had the two fences running here on the backside. The white pines went in, they were supposed to be maintained, in between they were supposed to be maintained, kept under control. It was never kept under control. It basically, we got treated like we don't matter back there. So between drainage and the stuff that's growing here is ridiculous. The way that the weeds are coming up in between the trees, ridiculous. Bags are flying up in there from Walmart, hanging up there. We can't get to them, it's too high. So those white pines that were meant to be like a buffer are now way up in the air. They're not buffering anything. And we have a hole in the fence, so if my kids are sitting in the pool, there is a hole in the fence right here where the tree that's on their property has a limb that is significantly large going straight through the fence. And when I called up Walmart to fix the fence, they basically sent their landscape, not landscaping, but their building people to come down, and they have little pickets, and they patched it instead of fixing the thing. They didn't cut the tree, they didn't do anything, they just patched it. And now the tree is coming back through, breaking through it. So privacy-wise, I have no privacy because you can see right through. Drainage-wise, I can't use, I can't use what's mine back there to do a garden. I can't walk back there to get to my shed. I can't do anything in my backyard because this is all wet. So if anything goes on, I think as an abuter and as dealing with this since 1996, knowing it was coming in, purchased the house, was fully aware that I feel we should be bought of and, yes, protect this.
I agree.
And I'd like a new fence up there because that's ridiculous. It should have the landscaping fixed on the other side of the fence and not have two fences. It looks ridiculous. And it should be maintained. You put the high, put the fence back up on the higher part where it should be, and then maintain on the other side of the fence like you would do on any other piece of the property that's around that your landscaping would be done. So we have for over 20, over 20 years have dealt with just garbage looking back there.
So just to give you a little bit of relief.
Yep.
Thank you for saying all that. And I know I'm going on a speaker, I'm a half a board, but I don't know that, it's good to know that you have those concerns. This is not the meeting for that, but, but what I'm saying is, there has been 100%, and what I'm saying is, is there, we have had a lot of projects coming into town that we have, once it got to the point of discussion of moving forward, if the plan was moving forward, having requests by the abutters, to then talk to the plan to say, in order for us to move forward, are you willing to? So I just want to be careful not to go down that road just yet. It's good to know, but I also want to give you some relief that there will be a time for that if we even get to the next stage or next stages. Am I, right, I'm thinking of the Algiers, I'm thinking of.
Mike Hazy next door to 266.
Yeah, just saying, or no, when they cut all the trees down next to the Stop &amp; Shop entrance and the resident that was behind, and we said, oh, we'll keep some of the trees, we'll mark them off, and she was here, and she had her list of demands, and we said, are you okay with that?
I don't think.
And they all agree. They would have followed through, well, the project didn't get finished, but they would have followed through with the agreement that was agreed between the two, or specifically, again, with the Algiers being in here and us talking to all of those developers about their damn demands and wishes and making sure everybody lined up. So all I'm saying is, is that now, I just want to save you some energy to say, if this even got to the next phase, that we will have time for you to basically give a list of requests, not demands, but requests, to say.
I feel, my last comment here is, I just feel like something should be done because nothing, because this is the opportunity while somebody from Walmart is here wanting something, that it should be brought up, that the fence hasn't been done since 1997.
Yeah, and in fairness, that's why I wanted to save you on the energy because he is an engineer hired by Walmart, he doesn't work for Walmart, right? So that's why I just wanted to be clear. I mean, you do work for Walmart, but it's hired by Walmart. So it's a voice, it's an ear to hear, to relay, they can go back.
That's what I'm saying. You can relay that back.
I would have to guess, and I don't want to speak on it, but being pretty knowledgeable about different types of corporate businesses, the amount of revenue that this is going to drive is going to far outweigh the cost of putting in a new fence, and I have a feeling that that would be within every right to ask for and some of the other things that you're requesting. So I just want to say that let's see if we even get to that point, but believe me, you will know, you will know when the right time is to have that conversation, am I?
Correct. And here's the other thing, I'll throw it out there, too. I wasn't involved in the project. I worked for the company in 97, believe it or not, but I wasn't involved in this particular project. If there are conditions in that decision that you have in front of you that say you have to maintain a fence.
Yeah, I have it all recorded on the DCR tape.
I hate to say it becomes an enforcement issue, but you have every right to bring that to the town and say, these issues aren't being followed.
These issues aren't being followed, and I think a couple of you were on board at that point, so maybe we could have them address it.
Yeah, because it would all be, there's a plan that was approved by the board that shows something back there, and if they haven't maintained it, then it's figuring into violation.
Stormwater.
And the drainage is a problem, so that should be addressed also.
Yeah, of course, that's the point. And so that ties me back to my original conversation, which was, if this was to be paved, I'm not saying that it's either or, because it can be none, but I'm saying that if they're willing to protect this entirely, whether it's wetlands or not is not the point. The fact of the, I mean, it should be, unfortunately. The fact is, is this was granted permission to be developed, and by developed, I mean paved. So therefore, all those lights get turned back on, and then how's your drainage going to look? And it's not a threat, it's more of a, it's just better to have this buffer, especially if we can get it in writing that it will stay a buffer.
And I do think you should check the paperwork and bring ideas to that, not being paved, that it was, there was something in all the paperwork about that, so you have to remember that.
No, that's fine.
You do need the specs on that.
I certainly say. That was supposed to be a full document.
It is, correct.
Right.
And not, not being.
I thought it was Cruzneig. I thought it was Cruzneig.
Which, I don't mind Cruzneig, but we were never asked about Cruzneig.
Steve's at the end of the Latin.
In your research, is there, ever been anything, because I know we went through this when Cumberland Farms moved across the street, from the street. Is there, is there state laws, regulations as far as distance from the gas pumps to be from the public way? I know because that was a concern with some of the other applications we have. I didn't know if it was actually state law or if it was just something that the.
I don't believe so. Cumberland Farms has been one of our clients forever, and I've probably developed a thousand gas stations in the Northeast in 30 years, unless the town has a specific requirement that says you can't have pumps within a certain distance. I'm unaware of any state requirement that says, you know, usually your setback bylaws are going to be what governs where you put pumps, where you put a KMP, all that stuff. And this would be fully compliant law, but we wouldn't be looking to stick anything in a setback. And I certainly understand that that easement at one point was there to help buffer the particular corner from the Walmart. We would certainly look to maintain, you can see we're trying to maintain a pretty healthy vegetative strip. We would be willing to go with different architecture as well. We're not looking to come in here and just drop a square building, you know, that looks like a 1980s gas station. Willing to work with the town.
I'm against it.
If we're able to determine if that easement could be extinguished, there's no, there's no problem.
I'll tell you, I mean, this looks like a hell of a lot better of a buffer than whatever that's going on over here. You know what I'm saying? So again, I'm not, I'm not defending or arguing for or against this at this point because I know that's not the time.
It's just, it's not the worst proposal I've ever seen.
That's, I'm shocked that it actually is going there, right? Because I'm glad that that's where.
That's the smart.
Because when you were here last time, and you were like, if they're thinking about popping this bale of iron back here, I'm going to have, I was like, I wouldn't mess with you on that meeting, you know? And so when you came in, the reason why I'm even open to the conversation really is because I'm, if it were going to go in, that's probably the best place to put it, to be honest. So that's, that's all, that's where I was kind of.
I concur.
And it would also give us a little bit of leverage to be able to get some of the requests.
She has a valid point, though. All of that isn't a site plan approval, because I've talked to them in the past and couldn't get them.
So what are you going to do? How do we get them? Okay. Let's, I'm mad, I'm not mad, I'm just annoyed that it's the fact that it's in writing, and how many things are in writing that don't get done? And it doesn't matter who the enforcement is or anything like that.
Why, it's not to you.
We're in a position, have you not tried everything you could at this point to solve those problems?
The drainage.
All of that, yep.
Not really, haven't tried that much, just call about the fence. The drainage would be a turkey in 1997.
So what I'm saying is, is that if this were a situation where we can leverage solving all of those problems to help get that project or to have that project get completed, we can leverage all of the problems that the abutters have, it's just a good political approach to being able to get problems solved. Doesn't matter if that was in writing on a typewriter from 1997.
It's recorded at the registry of Deaves.
And so why hasn't anything got done?
I don't know.
Then make a phone call and get it done this week, and we won't even have a problem.
Here's what I'm going to do, just to help.
Just say, play the game. Play the game. This is a giant game.
As well as yourself. If you want to get any of your contact information, now, as you mentioned, I owe as much sway with Walmart as you do, but what I can do is take back the concerns and say, hey, you have an abutter who has concerns, that go back to the original decision, you might want to consider.
That they can still.
You know, getting out there and doing some things to be a good neighbor. Now, my experience working with Walmart, when these types of issues are brought to their attention, they fix it more often than not. Corporate hasn't heard about it. You might have talked to a warehouse manager, you might have talked to a maintenance guy that doesn't always get bubbled up to Bentonville, Arkansas. I can get it to you when I talk to Walmart tomorrow, I'll talk to the guys in Bentonville.
I believe I talked to.
Yeah.
So I would.
So we, I think your point's a good one, too, that right now you got a little more leverage than any other time where you just go out and say, hey, there was a decision from 25 years ago, please start enforcing it. Now Walmart knows they want to build that, they might be a little quicker to act knowing that. It buys a little good faith should this move forward.
And to Amy's point, it shouldn't take that.
I agree.
However.
And will they maintain in the future not interrupt you for any future endeavors that they do up front, they need to maintain and do what they're supposed to do and not blow it off.
And in any kind of future agreement that we would make, there would be the stipulation in there about who and where and what and who's responsible. And if it's in that writing, then it should be done by Saturday. But that's been in writing since 1997, and nothing's been done since 1997, to your point. So what we're saying is, is that if a major conglomerate is looking for a revenue-driving project, they're going to be much more willing to take care of their neighbors than if there isn't a project that is going to drive revenue. I'm not saying that we should approve it, I'm just simply saying that everything, whether you like it or not, is a chess match. Every single thing, whether you agree that it should be or not is not the point. The fact of the matter is, that's just how business gets done. So at the end of the day, if we're trying to protect our abutters and we can leverage this project to get some of that done, then why wouldn't we explore it? That's all I'm trying to say.
So anything else you need to add?
Say that.
Anything else you'd look to?
No, I'd like to bring him to other hearings, I go. I am so usually on the other side of, you know, that type of common sense, and I hate to say it like that, but you got an opportunity here. Whether this goes forward or not, you still have the right to look at that decision, and there is ways where the town can enforce that. Through, I see where they issue daily fines until things get fixed. I can't tell you what needs to be fixed because I don't know, but you, you know, made a pretty good point, that fencing and trees and litter and lighting and all that stuff. You know, a lot of things, too, that were built in 1997 are a lot different today. You probably wouldn't have a lot of those problems today, but, you know, those lights look to be about 30 feet high back there, if I had to guess, which you probably wouldn't have today. So there's a lot of things you might be able to do if this goes forward, even if it doesn't, but again.
And also advancement in water flow or storm drainage, you know, ideas and technology and data have changed over 28 years, right? It's like doctors used to prescribe smoking for people with asthma because it thought it gave their lungs exercise. Things, as time goes on, more information comes up, and I'm not saying that they haven't been negligent, but I'm just saying that back then they probably thought, well, no, you're not going to have a problem back there because of this. So whatever the problem is, at the end of the day, it doesn't solve the fact that you can't walk in your backyard and do this to us. And we would make sure that before we even entertained that, that that got addressed. Because if we're not going to leverage this opportunity to get you, our residents squared away, then there's no point in even having this conversation.
Well, I think, what does it matter what we put in writing if we're not going to make
sure that you guys follow? So like, we could do another, like, let's just say we go forward and we put it all in writing, let's just say that they're not going to come back and be like, well, now I want this.
I look forward to the nineteen ninety seven document getting enforced this week. I do, I look forward to it because I can't wait to see what the next steps are. And if that, that document, we then know and we can tell our enforcement officer to go out and enforce everything that's in that, then we can have another conversation. But to the point that you keep saying it's in writing and that nothing has been done is exactly the conversation that is the reason why we should be using the leverage in which we have right in front of us.
These are printed from the registry agreements, then bring it in and ask the building department to enforce it. That's their job and that's what they should be doing. It doesn't need to happen with up split and go of an easement.
Okay.
I think there's a copy in the planning board office anywhere, maybe it was seen one years ago.
Do you have enough feedback on this board or do you have a question?
But my only other question is how do we get some sort of determination as to one, whether or not the easement can be extinguished at all? And then what would be the mechanism? Is it another vote by the town's planning board? Is it a town meeting? Is it a town attorney? What, can we try and figure out what that process is?
I think it would be all of the above.
Yeah, yeah.
Your attorney did have to have town council involved and, because that's, that's a given.
Okay.
And he probably had to have.
And when is a concrete proposal in front of the board, you know, then we could move on that.
Yeah, that's ideally what, you know, so here in some of this stuff, you know, that area that we showed on that previous plan, we could amend that to make it a little more agreeable, like I said, to the neighbors. You know, so I think what I'm hearing, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, is that it's something that town would be willing to entertain, whether or not it gets extinguished or not, we can look at it.
This property, the stuff that you're proposing here now with the gas, that's going to remain Walmart property. It's not going to be subdivided into its own lot to be possibly sold off. It's going to remain Walmart property.
It would have to.
That's right, now, yes. I mean, again, I don't have a crystal ball of twenty years from now what they do or what happens, but there's no intent to do anything other than build a fueling facility in the southeast corner of the property as it is at here.
Like a Walmart Express, like one of those little mobile expresses that they have.
I don't even know what, I'll be honest, I don't even think it's just Walmart gas. It's like BJ's Gas, like Costco gas, only they put a little store with it because they, that's what they do.
Be prepared with Cumberland Farms though, that's good.
No, this is purpose, that's what we want to hear. I'd much rather hear it tonight and then if we do go forward, we know what we're up against, we can design for it versus when we show up to hearings and a hundred angry neighbors, you know, show up with us and.
Did you mention that Cumberland Farms is a client of the third?
Well, they're, they've been a client of older for twenty-five years.
Of course, it's a new entity now, they sold.
For Cumberland Farms? Yeah, they need to be American now, there's no more.
It's a breadwinner.
Farms, yeah.
Question, the property across the street from Cumberland's, is that or is that not owned by Cumberland's?
An entity of Cumberland Farms, they've got so many different entities that.
So maybe a suggestion also, if, you know, you want something, you want something, maybe we get rid of the ice law.
Oh, God, that'd be nice.
I think we're going to have, I think we're going to have a lot more luck leveraging this big piece of land than getting that asbestos torn down.
Yeah, if that's owned by Cumberland Farms, I can almost guarantee that they're not going to say, oh, yeah, put another gas station.
No, they won't.
It's definitely. It's actually deed restricted, I believe, not to have one.
Yeah.
They won't even let you sell milk.
I'm surprised they didn't deed restrict it when they did that.
No, they did.
They did.
They did.
That makes sense. Okay, so we certainly know we've got some homework to do and we appreciate you guys taking the time and you're cutting out and letting us know what we're up against. We'll work with Danielle, we'll probably contact town council, I'm going to relay to Walmart that it's still an option on the table. Obviously, there's, you know, we're at step one of a thousand. But, you know, what I'm hearing wasn't a flat out, no, don't come back.
And we didn't throw anything at you.
I've been doing this a long time, I don't think it ever, ever thrown at me. Followed at the town meetings, I could threaten, I could have my tires slapped.
Uh-uh.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it was called baby killer for doing a Cumberland Farms. I don't know how that equates to the baby killer, but I got told to get out of the city west field. They followed me to the city limits in his car.
Nobody.
In South King's, Ternwood Island, somebody put a screwdriver in my tire.
One more thing, it was very nice to meet you.
Thank you.
And two, if I supply Danielle with my contact information, could you?
Yeah, I'll make it even easier, we'll eliminate one million if I have any cars left. We just moved offices, so we changed our address, but the numbers are still right, but we were told to get rid of all our old business cards. I think I still got a couple. The phone number, the address is, we moved four hundred yards away, but the phone numbers are all still good. My cell phone's.
Where are you looking?
What's that?
Your office, where is that located? Your office, your office, that's on.
Where are you? Oh, yeah, it's south of our address, or somewhere, west of where we are now. So you can send me your contact information, I'll send it directly to my contacts at Walmart to make sure they know.
I'll send it up tomorrow.
Okay.
Thanks, I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Appreciate you. Yeah, thanks. All right, let's move on. The next discussion, approval letters for Zero One Ponce Street, discussions about revisions to the original conditions. Reason I threw that in there was we had a discussion with the building inspector. And he, he said that an A and R, which was one of the conditions, an A and R, that proposal building was not a subdivision, so an A and R.
It is, it has to be subdivided, not part of the whole entire lot, that's what actually Dan stated, that it has to be subdivided, not part of the lot.
Right now, it's part of the whole possible.
So an A and R has to happen for it to be a lot of it.
Only if they're buying that section, maybe they're buying the whole thing.
He said he's only buying that section.
I understand, but he's going to have to do that. No one's going to do an A and R.
So what's the problem with it being on there? And why are we worried about it? He wasn't.
They just need a lot number, you need just a address instead of Zero One Ponce, they have to do that eventually, right? You can't just, because Zero has to have their own number, maybe the assessors have to do that.
Yeah.
Did I not understand the, the answer that he gave, where it was not, I thought, I thought it was clearly not being subdivided, which is the purpose of an A and R.
Not being subdivided.
I don't know, it, it matters one way or the other, I actually.
I mean, if he doesn't.
If he's going to buy it, they're going to have to subdivide it. But we approved the plan as it is, as long as he doesn't subdivide less than that, it's not an issue. I don't think it needs to be there.
That's, that was the impression I got from the building inspector, that it's moved, there's no reason for it.
It doesn't hurt if it should be there because if he's subdividing it in that way, we can make sure that it's exactly how it is.
How weird.
He was, he was fine, it was a little.
I don't think he knew anyway.
He doesn't.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Does it put away, does it leave it the way it is or does it need to be amended?
If you guys are going to vote to amend it, don't you think that we would have to make sure it was on the notification?
Right, that's what I think, but you have to go through the process.
Do you have the proposed letter here?
If it was, I'm sorry.
Do you have a proposed decision letter here?
No, I do not, unless it's.
Can we put it on the next agenda that we see a proposed, a decision letter? Because they get recorded, like, we have to, I would like to see it. To prevent any, I think we should have every, every decision letter come in front of us so that we can approve it, to make sure that everything's there and it's not missing, so that we can prevent any issues in the future.
Well, we did approve, that's the thing, we did approve it.
The letter, so like, making sure that everything's on it because with the Algers property not being on, correctly on the decision letters that were filed to the registry of deeds is an issue, so just making sure that we all check off cross Ts and dot Is. I'd like to see it from now on, proposed decision letters.
Well, we do that when we sign, when we sign.
That letter never came in front of us for, but the numbers three eighteen and three fourteen from the street. I actually never saw all that as for two sixty, sixty, two sixty-five, Monpont Street.
All right, so what's the pleasure of the board then, once again? We bring up the next meeting, we let it ride?
I'm just totally confused by what you're going to be doing.
Yeah, I mean, they can record it the way it is.
They, I'm sorry?
They can probably record it just the way it is.
Okay.
I think I'm, you know, the building inspector brought it up and I agree that it doesn't matter that, I mean, they're going to have to do that if they buy it anyway. But.
What's, what's the approval letter? Like, what are we, what are we missing?
So, do you know how I just write a?
I'm not correct, I'm confused.
You know, the Walmart thing that I said is recorded at the registry of deeds, when we approve the site plan, all the conditions and everything are actually agreed to, so to make sure that all of the conditions that we agreed to, we should have them out. Like, so say for instance, tonight we approve something, the next meeting it comes to us as a proposed letter so we can make sure that everything, and it is correct.
Yeah, got it. And it's.
They actually have a signed letter that they can record now.
Who's that?
The.
The applicant.
For Zero One, they're storing.
You know, the storage.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think there's anything preventing them from recording that.
What was the other condition that was on it? That had to comply with all the town law laws, which it has to anyway.
But that's been on most decision letters for E and R.
Oh, I remember it being on others.
I see it all the time, it's in the registry of deeds, it's just a crossing the T, dotting on.
All right, so what's the pleasure of the board then, just leave it as, if I understand correctly, just leave it as?
Leave it, let it record it.
Okay.
When you, who signed the approval, the approval letter that's getting recorded? Because it hasn't been brought to a meeting to have it been done. They have a letter, who signed it?
Did we close the letter?
When they, a site plan, when they have a letter.
We haven't signed it yet.
Okay, so can we, right? Can we bring it to the next meeting on April third?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, and now let's get to the last one. Approved release of executive session minutes from February second, two thousand twenty-three. We got to take care of this. We're getting all kinds of emails, phone calls, it's been two years. The last email was from the, what was it, the deputy director of?
The state of the open meeting law.
Of the, from the attorney general's office, and that the town is not going to be.
The meeting minutes were.
Let me finish, please.
They were.
And then the town, they made me mention it to notify the town that the town can be fined. So my question was, what's the fines? It said it was slapped unless we crossed the eyes of the deeds, and I said, no. So we have to have minutes done of February second, two thousand twenty-three.
The meeting minutes were done and they're.
The meeting minutes were of the executive session.
They were in the file, but I don't have any access to the files since they've been moved here.
There were no minutes for the executive session. There were no minutes, no, there weren't.
I, I remember.
Well, if you have a copy of them, this is going to solve everything.
I don't have a copy of them because they were in the file, because I used to do all of that work and I would leave it in the file.
Right, I was just going to say, that was when we didn't have a.
But since the office of the planning board has been moved from this room, and I have emails from the secretary that tell me that I can't go into the planning board office that I'm elected to go into, then what am I supposed to do?
So if there are minutes, let's solve this before we go to the rabbit hole. There are, if there are minutes in a file, let's start there. If there are not minutes in the file for some reason, what is the next step?
We got to, we got to submit them. They have to be submitted.
How do you submit minutes that don't exist? I know.
I'm not, I'm not saying.
No, I'm just saying, if there are minutes, that solves the problem.
It solves the problem.
If there are not minutes, for whatever reason, let's say, one, they weren't taken, but you remembered that they were, or two, they were misplaced, I don't care. But the point is, is if there are not minutes somewhere written down, what do we do next?
Because technically, bottom line, what we have to do is you have to approve the executive session mission minutes, and then we have to approve the being allowed to be sent out. So that's not on any agenda that anybody could find, that the minutes were voted on by, by the board. And so as far as the attorney general's office is concerned, they don't exist. Because I, it's my understanding that the records were searched as far as agendas and everything in video and whatnot, the board never approved executive session minutes.
That may be so, I don't recall, but they were written and put in the file.
Great.
Well, we have the minutes and we should check them on, approve them and problem solved.
And that problem is solved.
But I don't have the file, like, they were in the planning board office.
Well, they still must be there then, why they wouldn't walk in, why wouldn't they be there?
So at the end of the day, if they're there, problem solved, we do it at the next meeting.
Yeah.
If they're not there, now is this the exec, because I was not new, but it felt new still, it still feels new. The executive session was like off the record, having a conversation between us board of what our strategy was going to be moving forward. So I thought, I would have thought that there was no recording of it because it was kind of like a, we had to deal with this. Not recorded, not video taped, but under the open meeting law, yes, they are. They have. Because when we did the executive meeting, it was like a close and everybody left, we shut the thing down, we shut these off and we had a, I thought, and then we had a conversation.
So when that, those meetings occurred, I would take notes.
Okay.
And then I would leave them in the file and once they were approved and getting this, once their, the case was closed.
Yeah, it has to be closed.
So that's why they were in the file, because otherwise how do we remember?
I can't imagine those would go missing.
No, I'm not saying they are, I'm just saying I haven't been in there because of that. But that was what I did. So the desk was over there and I would go in and I would write everything down and I would stick it in the file. So whatever happened to that entire desk when it was moved?
Right, so if this was the February meeting, we did not have an assistant or secretary at the time, because she left in December, so there was no idea.
And here's, here's a good thing, compliment, you are, might be the most diligent person I've ever met, and I mean that as a compliment. So therefore, there's no way that those aren't in the file. Problem should be solved tomorrow.
Well, that's, it's been two years and they haven't been able to find, but this is what the attorney general's office has been sending, coding emails, has been sending medium emails, and sending email emails because she was actually reacting, our chair at the time was, had taken minutes, had told us, you know, that they existed.
Well, you see how I wrote everything down.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that's why.
I wrote them down because otherwise how are we going to remember? I mean, sometimes we don't remember certain details at last meeting. So I do it right away.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying they got to exist because I believe that you.
I could see where the executive session minutes would not have been recorded until something was over and done with, but anyway, we have to have them.
Was that, was that the lawsuit from Walmart, I mean, from Starbucks?
I don't remember.
That was a good conversation.
That was powerful. There were three things that went into the executive session on the, on the agenda. One was Dealey Way, one was.
Do you have a copy of that agenda?
Yes.
So Dealey Way, it was the Starbucks lawsuit.
And Zero One, no, no, what was the third one?
Was it that we were getting sued by the trolls online for not saying that YouTube, like, everything was getting reported by YouTube?
I don't even remember.
I know that was a conversation. We went to the board, we have like two or three executives.
The guys from Arkansas?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just for the record, I wasn't on the board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Plausible deniability.
That's right.
How do I get that card?
Yeah, was that who we got that we didn't load into?
Yeah.
Yeah, from Arkansas.
That's right.
The guy who was like watching meetings and setting up the meeting lawsuit. Wasn't it like all over the state?
Yeah, it was a troll.
Dealey Way, 314 Plymouth Street, petition number 983, notice of action filed to appeal from planning board vote to deny, recorded 121922. And the third one was recusal of Amanda Estates. That's what was on there.
That looks like minutes.
No, no, this was my notes that I took. Not all the, this is just in my research, I'm trying to find out what went on, where went on and how it went about. That's my own, no, I didn't take minutes of them.
Will you tell me that, those again? Sorry.
They were, I thought I had it.
You said Dealey Way, isn't that funny?
Yes, because if you.
No, I remember, I was saying, isn't that funny? Like, it's right here, Dealey Way, that's why I thought it was funny. Dealey Way.
Hold on, number one was Dealey Way, number two was 314, oh, this was on the agenda. That's where this came from. 314 Plymouth Street, petition 983, notice of action filed to appeal, planning board vote to deny, recorded 121922. And number three was recusal of Amanda Estates. Right, we didn't have an assistant secretary to, so that all the minutes were being done from recordings, right, either Peggy Salter or Caroline Fall. But again, those were only from the open meeting, you know, that was being recorded. But this being executive.
Would there usually be a secretary in the executive sessions?
Yeah, we didn't have one.
Yeah, right, so that's why I'm asking.
Right.
Would there usually be one that drops down the notes?
There could be, sometimes you, boards will ask the secretary to leave, but usually the secretary's involved.
Yeah, they usually do. But we didn't have one, and that's why I, you know, so I said, when I answered the emails, and obviously, this is all I got, you know, I remember the, remember the meetings, I remember the discussions, but I didn't take meetings and I didn't take minutes. And I thought, it was my impression that you had taken.
Were we in that big room? Were we in the big room?
I was, no, no, we were in the great room.
Yeah, sorry.
And I zoomed it from Florida.
Oh, right, right, right.
Okay. I remember something.
And there's, I'm just always trying to think of all the different angles. If for whatever reason, in the transition of the move, there's none to be found, then what?
We have to come up with minutes of the executive session, period. We have to do that, whether it, whether it's, you know.
Accurate.
You can think of what it was and what went on, what the discussion was, or.
But it's okay to put them together at this point.
We have to put them together.
Understood, okay, no, okay, so that's, that clarifies.
I think they would have to have a sit-down meeting of trying to figure it all out because I'm not going to remember two years, two years, two months ago.
Right.
It's two years and two months ago.
Exactly. Yeah. It made it sound like one of the emails, you got the same email I did.
I got it.
The Attorney General's.
I have it printed in with me.
Yeah. I don't know what else to do with it.
My point was if we couldn't find it, are you even allowed to recreate them?
We have to.
So if that's the answer, then that's, that's the solution, so let's hope that they find them. Okay, very good.
Well, I'll report that back then to Cody, that they were done, they were placed in the file and.
Got it.
I believe I emailed that earlier today.
I'm sorry?
I think I emailed that earlier today.
Oh.
But I don't email to other planning board members just because I'm of the open meeting law.
Well, I'm hoping that the, that it'll satisfy the Attorney General's Office.
When I see you, I don't.
That's a big thing, right, we don't want to mock them. Right. Okay, what else we have? Oh, approval of the minutes. How about, it's been a couple of weeks now, how about approval of the minutes of February 6th, 2025, as presented? Do I have a motion?
Moved.
And do I have a second to, to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll take a voice vote. Elliot?
Yes.
Amy?
I'm standing.
Bert, Dana?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Okay, meeting minutes of February 20th, 2025, as presented. Do I have a motion, please?
Moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the minutes of February 20th, 2025. Again, a voice vote. Brendan?
Yes.
Amy?
I'm standing.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Other business, Dealey Way, revolving account certification.